Good evening and welcome to the City Commission October 18th Study Session. This evening we have three items on the study session. We'll begin with number one, which is a quarterly report to the library. Matt?
Thank you for having me tonight. As you remember, I think I mentioned at our last meeting that September was National Library Card signup month. So we worked with the city schools to get applications out to every student in the district. And we were able to add 353 new kits to our list of users. So now 3,170 children here in the city of Leavenworth have library cards. That's about 25 percent of our users. It also increased the number of kids who have e-cards that they can use to access state library databases and other very valuable tools there. As part of our strategic plan, we wanted to issue 247 e-cards this year. We've already issued 453. And I think the connection between kids and literature is extremely important. About 70 percent of all the incarcerated adults in the country are literate. And juvenile justice experts show a clear link between illiteracy and children who end up in the law enforcement or the legal system. And the University of Kansas researchers showed that there's literally a gap of 3 million words between the number that some children here in one household and another. It has enormous impact on how well they read and write and communicate later. And usually the children, unfortunately, that fall in that gap are left behind. So again, we're really working hard to connect kids to books. One new project we're working on, we heard about the United Waves Campaign, they had the What This Place Needs series of meetings throughout the community. They got input from a lot of different people. And one of the primary needs that they identified was advancing education with an emphasis on childhood literacy. And I've shared this info with the library directors in Atchison, Basar, Bonner, Tongi, Lansing, all the area library directors. And we're planning to set up a coordinated effort with the goal of helping every child in the county achieve the standard literacy skills by the third grade. I think that's a natural fit for our libraries. And there is a whole slew of other organizations and people involved in reaching kids at that age. Head Start, preschools, and homeschoolers, and parents. And I think all of our libraries together can develop a series of programs with that goal in mind. We also talked about updating our website. And when we did that, we were able to get better statistics on use of our website. And in the month of September, there were 5,283 visits by 3,086 users who viewed 8,640 of our pages on our website. So if you add the number of virtual visitors to the number of people who walked in the door, over 19,000 people were in your library in September, which is more than half of the entire population of the city. Most of those virtual visitors came directly through a web search. And the most popular pages were Contact Us and Available Positions. So everybody wants to either talk to somebody or work at the library. Our events calendar was the second one, most popular. And the Resources and Explore a Topic came in third. And that's the one that people use to get access to some of those databases and some of the other reference information that we provide online. In November, it's actually, it's Nano Rymo Month, which is National Novel Writing Month. So it's a national program the ALA has been promoting for a few years now. And our newest adult, our young adult library in Crystal Snyder is leading a month-long program, which teens come to the library for write-ins that are scheduled for three times a week. And the goal is to match the kids' creative drive along with the discipline and to have them actually finish a novel by the end of the month. So that's a new program that we're starting. And on November 13th at 2:00 PM, a licensed therapist named Jennifer Dombowski will lead a stress-free holidays program that can help you deal with the stress of the upcoming Thanksgiving and Christmas onslaught. It's probably better than another helping with cookies, fewer calories. This week, actually tomorrow, the Kansas Library Association's annual conference starts down in Wichita. We're sending five employees down there to sharpen their skills, learn new ones, and interact and meet with other librarians, including two of our newest staff members. They'll be their first time attending. So I'm sure that they'll be able to walk away. They're very excited about the kind of programs, the kind of information they'll be able to share, and things they'll be able to learn. We applied for a grant from the Northeast Kansas Library System, so they will cover two-thirds of that cost. So we were able to spread that expense out a little bit. And our third quarter report for our strategic plan is not complete, but I wanted to share some quick figures with you. Our circulation for the first three quarters is 160,939. We had 112,524 visitors in the library building. There were 14,180 individual users who borrowed something from the library in the first three quarters. We loaned over 13,000 items to other libraries, which is a really important part of what we do, as the largest library in the Nichols region. And program attendance is still going hot up. There were 338 kids programs that brought over 9,000 kids into the library. And 130 adult programs that drew about 1,179. And that is definitely, I think, a changing role for public libraries, not just here, but all over the country. The biggest library in Columbus, which won the LA, or the Library Journal Award for Best Library in America about five years ago, just finished completely renovating their building. They literally got rid of about 60 percent of the books in their collection and converted the space that used to be occupied by those books into meeting spaces, conference rooms, places where people can come and access information and use those resources. So the role of libraries is changing as information and content through the web, through other places, is becoming more readily available and less expensive. And the use of our library indicates that, too, that we're becoming more and more of a gathering place, which is a place where people come to learn, to use our computers, to work together on projects. We have people that use our rooms to tutor. We have people that come in there and take tests. They have an online intrusive exam or something like that. So as we develop, we're looking forward to developing our next three-year plan. That is, I think, something we would really like to explore and see if that's really a direction that more and more people want to take. It would behoove us to dedicate our energy and our budget and our activities to serving those needs. So that was quick and easy? Anybody have any, has any questions?
I think you covered quite a bit. Any questions?
I hate to throw just a bunch of numbers out there.
But those are, those are good numbers. I'm glad that, you know, it looks like a good portion of our community, at least you're getting repeat people in there are using the library. That's really good.
And the staff doesn't walk past the counter, so we're not cheating. We use a different door. The people that cross through that little beam and make it go beep are actual library users.
Great.
Well, thank you, Matt. We appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Item number two is to review the snow and ice control policy.
It is getting to be that time of the season.
Any degrees outside, so we should talk.
Yeah, but it could change tomorrow here.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Mike McDonald, Public Works Director, Ed Davis, Operations Superintendent, kind of gave the brief overview that we do every year on our snow plan. This is the same plan, basically, that we have used since 1993. It was prepared by a previous Operations Superintendent. And it seems to have worked very well. And we have no changes for the plan this year. Basically, Ed is in charge of operating the plan with his people and personnel. There, we have a variety of resources to apply to snow and ice as they occur. We have big trucks. We have, we have five large dump trucks that we use. And then we have six smaller trucks that we deploy. In addition to that, we have supply of sand. We have supply of salt, calcium chloride, and other tools that we can use to address the snow and the ice. Probably the key things that everyone likes to know is emergency snow routes. And there's a list of those in the snow manual that we've provided. And this is also at the library and online. Emergency snow routes are the main routes in the city. And if it snows, the city manager or the chief of police can declare a snow emergency. Generally, if it's over eight inches, it's going to be a snow emergency. If it's between three and eight, it might be. It depends on circumstances. And citizens should remove their cars from the snow route marked streets. Don't get around the corner. And I think residents have learned over the years that if they can do that, the streets on the snow routes get plowed curb-to-curb. And that makes a huge difference for them if they get their cars off the streets. They are subject to tow. They are, if you get stuck on the street, you can be towed. We try to plow the residential streets after snowstorms. Generally, where the book says if it's a three-inch storm, that we will. I would say that we tend to err on the side of plowing rather than not plowing. Ed has done several kind of operational changes in the way we look at things. In the last few years, we've been able to plow the residential areas with city forces rather than contractor forces. I think, oh, except maybe once in the last two or three years. And that's a huge time saver, or money saver. And I think it's more efficient use of our resources. The problem we have with plowing residential streets is that's where all the cars are parked. And so you've got to move in and out. And it's not a curb-to-curb operation. We plow once up and once back. And the snowplow blades on the smaller vehicles that we use in the residential areas are not 12-footers. They're typically going to be like eight, nine, or 10. So people feel that we may have only gone up there once. But in between the cars and the blades, we do try to get them taken care of. And then cleaning the end of the cul-de-sacs is a separate operation. You need to get one of the small trucks, typically a three-quarter ton truck with a plow, just to get maneuverability on the thing. Couple other items that come up constantly is we don't plow alleys. Some houses, that is their only access. We understand that. But our policy is that we don't plow alleys. We'd ask if they see a snowstorm coming, they need to take that into account, that they should perhaps park facing a different direction or perhaps park on the street. And if you have plowed your driveways, we don't watch for it so we can come out and plow it in right away. We just get everybody's as a matter of course. There's no favoritism. We will try to plow the streets, but we do not try to not plow in driveways. They just get plowed as they get plowed. However, if you think about where you put your snow, if you do clear your driveway, generally, the snowplow's going to be on the right side of the street. If you plow your snow on the downstream side of your driveway, it won't get pushed back into your driveway as much. So if you can get through it, it helps.
So if you're mad at your neighbor?
The, another call we often get is, I have a medical condition. I'm concerned that the rescue people can't get to me. We understand that. Normally, we will not make a special trip to your house unless we are contacted by the fire department or EMS, that they're on their way to your house for an emergency. And we will dispatch a vehicle to plow the way or sand the street as necessary to do that. And that's how we handle that. And if you have questions, where are they? They haven't plowed my street, or that sort of thing, you can call the service center. Because if we're in one of these more than three-inch events, we will have somebody answering the phone and taking notes. We have a radio system. And we can find out that information. But call the service center, 682-0650. And if no one answers, feel free to call the police department. But we should be answering the phone down there if we're in a snow event of over three inches. That's the short version. The snow manual covers the parking lots. It shows the streets and the routes. There's a wealth of other information about when you apply calcium chloride and when you apply your sand, and all that sort of thing. I'd be happy to talk about any of that. But these are the items that I think we've had the most discussion on in the past.
I think you did a good job of covering it. Is there any questions?
Yep.
No?
Do all of our trucks have GPS now?
No, we're working on that. But I think we have three.
We got a total of five.
Five. So we're hitting there.
And what we do is we basically switch them back and forth. So once we hear any time, we'll switch them to the snow truck so we can identify where they are.
Where they are.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a huge benefit because it will track your speed. It'll say when they were, were not in the neighborhood, and that sort of thing. So it's, it's a technology that people have come to expect. And we're trying to accommodate that. It's a very useful management tool. And the public seems to find that that's something we should have.
And just kind of bring you guys' attention. We do have six new personnel that we have hired. We're still waiting to hire two more. So we're going to have six additional guys that's brand-new, that's really never plowed. So right now, you'll probably see our trucks out here in the next couple of weeks.
Doing some training.
We're going to be doing a lot of practicing, to know their routes, the grids, and all the different stuff. So we'll stay on top of what we do, but it's going to take a lot of training. So I don't expect them to be good the first year, but we're going to do our best.
One snowfall, the second, they'll be much better.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three is our tourism grant fund.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, if you'll remember, at the goal-setting session, we talked about using some of our transient guest tax revenue to pour it back into the community, if you will, to help some of our attractions, some of our nonprofits with tourism-related programs. So Taylor and Kristy Lee from our CBB have done a lot of research and have put together a draft of a program for you to listen to tonight and see what your thoughts are.
So as Paul said, staff has researched many state and national tourism grant programs and benchmarks to base the product that's in front of you tonight. The program is proposed to enhance the economic impact of tourism in our community. It would be a reimbursable grant, so it would be designed to not cover the whole cost of an event or project. But it would be a considerable amount towards that. And it would help that organization have some skin in the game to make sure it's a meaningful project. Events or projects that this could fund would show a measurable benefit to the community. It would enhance the character and reputation of Leavenworth for tourism. It attract, could attract new events or strengthen existing events. And it would hopefully generate additional transient guest tax funds. We were looking at doing two different funding cycles per year, one in February and one in August. The maximum award amount would be $5,000. And organizations would be limited to one grant per cycle. It would be geared towards overnight room stays.
One per cycle, so they could basically...
So they could get two a year.
Get two a year.
Mm-hmm. It would be geared toward overnight stays. That would kind of boost your...
Guest tax.
Guest tax.
Right. It would help your application, but it wouldn't make or break it. You could pretty much fund anything from promotional materials to advertisements, brochures, event expenses, quite a whole lot of things. And then a grant completion report would be mandatory at the end so we could see what we got out of it and how it helped the community.
How many, how many people and all that sort of thing?
We're recommending funding for the program of $20,000 per year. And transient guest tax funds would be available for that. We put together a comprehensive packet with guidelines, the application, and the completion report so that someone could have all of those items right there in front of them when they're looking to apply. So they know exactly what to expect, what they could get out of it, and what they'd have to do at the end. I'm here for any questions that you may have.
I did send this out to a couple nonprofits in the area, some museums, I guess, some tourist attractions. We did have one question about number five in the application packet. It's stuff about, do you expect increase overnight stays? And will this sustain tourism-related jobs? And there was a thought that maybe this was mandatory, that you have to create or sustain tourism jobs, or you have to have overnight stays. That's not the case. We're just trying to get as much information as we can. But it would in no way limit anybody's eligibility for the program. And we just asked them to fill out these the best they can. If the answer is, this, this program will happen with volunteers and existing staff, then that's fine. We just want to collect as much information.
That's really in our community what you're going to get.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's fine.
And we tried to simplify the application as much as possible so that if you already have your event or your project planned out, it really should only take five to 10 minutes to complete this.
Yeah, it really wasn't too. Some grant applications are, like I said, you know...
Yeah.
This doesn't require a grant writer, yeah.
And I like, I like the way you, you know, you added in here, because I've read through this before, that event expenses for hosting a destination event drawing attendees from outside the region rather than just a local event. And then all the lists of things here that you won't find, which is important, too.
Yeah. And maybe some events that are traditionally local, if they add a marketing piece that goes farther out into the metro and stuff, then that can become more of a attraction. And we can help with that.
Right.
Very good, sir.
I do think we have a few, maybe people are here because of that. And if you want to hear from them.
Okay. I can. I got a question first. In the past, I think when Connie Hattenberg was running the CBB, we would get a report on our guest tax. And I haven't seen one in a long time. Could we get one generated to sort of give us a feel what these two hotels are doing for us?
Right.
Dick, you have something?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, I'm Dick Gervaisini. And I'm a member of the Leavenworth County Historical Society board. I got my hands on this policy last night. And the front part of it is excellent. But when I went into the application form, it was skewed towards generating people that are going to stay overnight. Our biggest fundraiser is the Vintage Homes Tour in the Christmas timeframe. Most of these people come from local area, Johnson County, Atchison County, as far away as Topeka. Some people come from Nebraska, but it's a day trip for them. So when I read through this, I was saying, especially the application form side of it, there's no way that we could get a grant from, from this situation. Then in April or May, Mike Stevenson made a presentation. And he was told, hold off. We have a...
We're working on this, yeah.
Another fund coming. And we were looking for assistance with our insurance. It doesn't fit in this.
Well, I think...
Where do we stand?
We've talked to Mike before. I mean, we also talked about the fact that there were, you know, you have all kinds of expenses. And if this could help you with one part, maybe you would have more funds for the other part. But we get money from the transient guest tax. And so having events that promote Leavenworth, whether it's an overnight or not, like Taylor said, you know, you're, you're marketing outside the area, which is important. And I think your, your things, I really think your events could qualify. But I mean, this is money that you could be getting from this, that you, you have other money, too, that you could use something else for your insurance. And so, I mean, we can't, we, yeah, I don't think we could cover insurance. I just don't see that. And I think we told Mike that when he was here, too.
And I know, because this is transient guest tax and part of the rules that govern that, it does have to be used for tourist-attracting events. And that's, you know, part of the rules that we work under on that. And yeah, I was also hoping, and I did talk with Mike, too, I said, you know, you might have to rethink, you know, a shifting of expenses where you don't have the outlaying money. You could use this for, say, the Vintage Homes Tour. And then also the race, you know, some of those expenses.
The race has been canceled.
It has, okay.
That's no longer an event.
Okay. Well, I'm just like, those are the ones that I know that you had, or whatever you replace it with. And, you know, hopefully, in your budget, you know, you'd be able to shift your resources to promote and start those, maybe use these dollars and that. That was kind of our reasoning with that, too, if it's possible to do that.
It's a possibility.
Yeah. And I agree with you. Right now, most of our events, not just for the Historical Society, but the other museums, too, are predominantly local attractions. So I, you know, although I, you know, we do want to see people from out of the area, and the Vintage Homes Tour does. One of the things, there's never been any place to stay here in town, though, either. So we're, you know, and then the inclement weather would, you know, be a factor. So I'm hoping, you know, with the hotels, that gives people an option to stay, you know, like, you can hope, you know, like I said. But, you know, it is really, most of yours are a day trip on that. But, you know, hopefully with that, they'll shift a little bit, maybe stay around a little longer on that. But I agree. I would like to see some flexibility in it, that it would not just be out of town, and you have to prove that, you know, you know, until we get some track record under us, that the museums and the other events, you know, can draw that, you know, outside of the community. I think there's probably, they know that they are, but really collecting that hard and fast data if they are, you know.
Yeah. We have a pretty extensive eligible projects, items, fundable items, and brochures and guide distribution is allowed. And that has nothing to do with generating overnight tours directly, advertisements, event expenses. I mean, it doesn't disqualify the project at all to not have an overnight pull or an overnight strategy.
We were really trying to keep it open so that we'd be able to promote the existing events that are still here right now. And everything from promotional items to regional brochures, any kind of marketing effort would definitely qualify.
Tourism-related projects and activities doesn't necessarily mean an event, though. I mean, it's, you're talking about hats, shirts, banners, things like that, and marketing materials. And that doesn't necessarily mean that it's event-related.
Right. It could be a project, event.
Could be something else.
Campaign, any kind of...
Right.
And I apologize. Mike is someplace in the southwest right now, so he's not here with the venue, so.
Appreciate you being here, though.
Thank you, Mr. Gervaisini. Is anyone else that likes to talk to the subject? Okay. I think you've done a pretty good job on this.
So start to, and then it'll be tweaked, obviously.
Well, yeah. There's always got to be a tweak. But you've got to start somewhere. And I think this is a good place to start.
I think it's good to have all of you look at that, too, just like Mr. Gervaisini did. I think it's good to have our organizations look at this, too, and just see what they think.
Sure. And we did post it on the website. And we mailed it out to several and Main Street so that others could have a look at it. And we'll definitely try to promote it before the next meeting when we bring it up again.
Okay.
Great. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. I'm not seeing any. We are...
Oh, I've got, oh, one comments or not?
Yeah.
I've got a couple things. One, I think we all received a letter from the county clerk about the county attorney possibly giving a training class on Open Meetings Act. I really think that we should use our city attorney for that. He's tied in the league against municipalities. He knows what it is. He's back there in executive session with us, et cetera. I'd recommend that city attorney Dawson take us into executive session for attorney-client privilege and give us a, you know, a, another refresher course on Open Meetings Acts. I don't think that the county attorney, he's well-versed on it, but I think our city attorney should be the one that's advising us.
Good point.
I think, that's what I'd recommend to the commission. The sec, well, now, obviously, I'd take a consensus from the commission. Second thing, I've thought a lot about the woman, Mrs. Henderson, last week, who had the wall built. Nothing that she did wrong, but a professional contractor in the area, in my opinion, gamed the system. They had gotten a building permit for the wall on the back of the property. They did not get one for the front of the property. So they knew that there were procedures go through to get building permits. In my opinion, that's inexcusable. I'd like to hear from this contractor. And I'd also like to consider that we put some meat into something. If a professional contractor avoids getting a building permit when they should know they should get one, that we can take some action against them, not necessarily fining them, but maybe not allowing them to do business in the city for a period of six months or something like that. Because otherwise, you know, that'll be what people will be doing, asking for forgiveness rather than... rather than asking for permission. And this is an egregious case, in my opinion. And it's nothing against Ms. Henderson, but it's against the company that built that wall, which is personalized lawn, personalized lawn service, and troubles me, and I think should trouble everybody in the city of Leavenworth.
Yeah. I, I agree that we need to look at it, because it's not the first time this has happened, and in your, you know, and, and we're in the position where we need to uphold the law and the codes, be equal, and, you know, and you're stuck with this, because all, you know, our public works director, he compared it to a fence, but this was not a fence. I mean, there was, I just, the, the workmanship that was done there, and to undo, fence is costly enough, and, but this was far more invasive to undo any wrongdoing, and, and I agree. I, I think that, you know, he did no favors for, you know, his client, and I, to the point where I thought she was taken advantage of, and that, and I, you know, so there, there, we need to do, look at something like that, because I, I know, like, that when she sells that house, some homeowner is going to inherit that problem and wonder, like we have in the past, like, what were they thinking at the time when they, you know, they did this on that? So I, I, there's got to be some type of punitive damage to, to discourage this. And, and he's, he's an experienced contractor. That's, you know, it's not.
I don't think the city should be dealing with unscrupulous contractors. I'm not saying this particular company's unscrupulous, but what happened there.
Or develop our own Angie's List or something.
That, that we have some teeth in it.
Yeah.
Our options last week were tear down the wall, or, you know, do nothing, and.
Yeah, just, yeah, destroy your yard or live with it.
But I think there should be another option, that's not dealing, not allowing contractors like that to work in the city of Leavenworth for a period of time.
I don't think you can deny them, because they're not a licensed contractor.
Right. We license certain trades, and we don't license certain trades. So if we do license certain trades, and we choose to do something, we can pull a license, suspend a license easily.
Right, okay.
If we don't license trades and they come in, I would imagine, I'm not a lawyer, but it gets a little hairier, if we don't have, if they don't require to have a city issued license.
Yeah, that's why I suggested we need to look at, like, options, maybe what other communities have, because we don't, this is not landscaping, is not landscaping, yeah, regulated, but.
Well, getting to one of Mayor Dedeky's pet peeves, if you license lawn and landscaping, if they choose to leave their grass clippings in the street.
Then we get them.
That's a great point.
Just throwing it, he's just throwing it out there.
I hear a lot of complaints about that.
This street, this city has the greenest streets.
Yeah, the greenest streets, yeah.
Yes, I hear a lot of complaints about that.
I understand what both Mark and Lisa are saying, and I can agree to part, one, you can't prove that they did this intentionally.
No.
And you need the intent to be able to put a fine out, if you can put a fine out. But my thought in public service has always been, just because it says it in a book or in a manual that it's illegal, that people have the right to come to us to use common sense, and I think that's what was done last week. We use common sense. If the street didn't have curb and gutters, I would have rethought the whole thing. But it's already been curbed and guttered, standard, the entire street is built, and that dead-end street, you're not going to see anybody coming in to whiten it. So what did they hurt? Nothing, other than they violated that little section in the book.
And that's this case. And honestly, it was a beautiful job, and it looked good, and when I drove by, and the pictures, I was, thank God, it's a good-looking, nice job. But that does not mean that the next time, we won't be so lucky, and we'll be like, I'm very sorry, this is hideous, and, and I'm sorry that the guy destroyed your yard, but you need to put this back. I mean, it, it was a consensus, because it was a well-done project. I mean, I'm not saying that it didn't improve the property, but that's not the main point. The main point is, it wasn't a legal project.
I understand that.
And my point.
Well, let's get this on a study session, and we can discuss it.
Yeah.
Because it's not on the agenda.
And my, my point, Mr. Mayor, is I think the decision may have been the same, but I also think it's coming upon the contractors to come to us to ask for those exemptions.
Well.
We have procedures for that. They didn't do it.
No.
And they know it. They got a building permit for the back of the property, they didn't get one for the front, knowing, in my opinion, that they'd have to go through the exemption process. And it would have probably resulted in the same, but they're our procedure. We can't allow contractors just to go willy-nilly and say, oh, well, yeah, it's okay, and we may have come up with the same decision, but at least we know that upfront, and neighbors that are affected should have some input on that. Right now, they didn't. And I just think it was an egregious act by this particular contractor.
What would you like us to talk about at the study session?
Life.
So we can.
Well, just make it one item for the evening, because this is going to be a long, long and arguous discussion.
And I would, it doesn't have to be immediate. I mean, you know, we made our decision, and you could, we, we could put that out, out a bit, you know, to, because it's, it's a complicated issue. It's not going to be easy.
Are we talking about increasing or adding to the trades that are licensed within the city?
I think that ought to be brought up.
Yeah, that'd be something we would discuss, I think.
Part of this.
If, if you want to bite on it, you're going to have to issue a license.
Right, right.
And that goes for the lawn mowers that cut the grass. All these, all these people we got running, must be 50 companies in Leavenworth, that got little trailers behind their truck, they're out there blowing grass in the streets, so.
Okay.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
It'll be our turn.
Thank you.